Just a second here. First up is the, our President's Executive Summary. I was not able to attend the function yesterday. How was everything at the Glen?
The Glen was beautiful yesterday. Very big crowd from 2:00 to 3:30, kind of thinned out about 3:30. Lots of people in line for Santa Claus who arrived promptly at 2:45. Everything was beautiful. And Katie and Don and Glen matter committee did a fabulous job as always.
Excellent. That was really it for the executive summary for me. Sorry.
Do you want to review Saturday?
Ah. We were gonna, yeah, we were gonna talk about, I mean, we could talk about Saturday. We did have our public workshop, I mean, our Town Council Workshop on Saturday where we identified our town administrator's goals as well as our legislative priorities. Those two items are on our agenda for later this evening. And from there, we will, we'll jump into our consent agenda. First item is bills or?
Prove to receive and place on file.
The motions are second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next item, we'll be sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. First item on our agenda, it's a public hearing, it's a transfer of a Class BV alcohol beverage license, application to transfer BV alcohol beverage license from the Newport Beach Club LLC, doing business as the Newport Beach Club, 195 Newport Harbor Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Good evening. James Hall from Abbot, Hall and Sheen in Providence.
Mr. Hall, just pull this around a little bit here. Thank you.
Is that better?
It's just, it's more for the people at home than for us.
Again, James Hall from Abbot, Hall and Sheen in Providence, representing Newport Beach Club. What's before the board is actually, there's three applications. There's a application to transfer liquor license, as you know, by the chair, as well as an application for holding a liquor license, and an application for a picture license, which is the restaurant license. That's currently what's before the board. We had been here several months ago. There was, we had suspended the hearing at that time due to the incident at the club that the police department, we had cooperated with, we thought was proper that the police department look into and investigate. The police department has concluded their investigation with a misdemeanor charge that was filed by the prosecutor. We thought this was probably the proper time to renew the application and get this done before the end of the year so that we could do a renewal looking forward.
First of all, we're gonna?
Mr. President?
Yes.
The, the issue before us is a license renewal. In past experience, license renewals have been denied when there has been an abuse of the license, serving to minors, disruptions of the peace, that sort of thing. This seems a individual criminal matter which is being handled by a court. It's a despicable description of what happened, but I'm not sure it's grounds for renewing, non-renewing, renewal of a business's license. I, I would defer, I would appreciate any information or feedback that the, either Chief of Police or our Town Administrator might want to provide on that?
I could just, just to clarify, it's not a renewal technically, this is a transfer, because more than 50% of the ownership was transferred to another entity. So this is to, that's treated under the liquor statutes as a new license holder. So if this transfer was approved, then they'd be in line for a renewal in December. Yeah, as, actually, it's supposed to be by December 1st. So, but anyway, I just wanted to clarify, it's not a renewal, it's a transfer.
And we would, we would approve that recommendation looking forward.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, I noticed that in Chief Lee's letter, it says that a lot of information is missing from the application. It does not list any other officers, such as Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, and it does not list any role that Patrick Tinsman may hold in the organization or pertaining to the new management of Newport Beach Club. And that information is, has that been added to the information you've provided?
That information hasn't been added. That's not one of the components of, of the application process. And we need a moment to explain it. Velocity LLC is a, is a investor in the Newport Beach Club. The Newport Beach Club is an existing entity that hasn't changed, it continues to exist. The Newport Beach Club has always operated the restaurant and operated the bar. In fact, they use a company by the name of ARM, which is a restaurant management provider. They provide Newport Beach Club with the certified bartenders, the tip certified people, and the management of the, of the restaurant. Velocity, which is, which became the investor that had bought the interest of one of the waterfront, would have no, would have no management role in the actual restaurant, in the bar itself. So we didn't provide, there is no, Mr. Tinsman does not have a day-to-day operation or day-to-day responsibility for anything to do with the bar or the restaurant.
And yet, he was involved in an incident at the restaurant? How was it?
He was there. He was absolutely, he was involved with an incident at the restaurant. His wife owns the majority chair of Velocity LLC. The Tinsmans were at the Newport Beach Club that day when the incident took place. But certainly, Mr. Tinsman was not in a management role or, or doesn't have a management role going forward with regard to the Beach Club itself.
I guess we're not certain what his role is precisely, since you haven't identified what that role is in the documents you've provided.
In the document that Chief Lee provides, Patrick Tinsman, according to the employee who was the subject of this assault, described him as her employer.
I understand there were a lot of things that were put into the, into the police report. That's, that's simply not the case. The person who had provided the police report worked for ARM Management, which is the management company that Newport Beach Club uses for the restaurant and for the bar.
So would it, how about though, from, so Velocity is the, is the parent company, right?
That would be one way to put it. Velocity would be a parent company or investor company that invested in Newport Beach Club. Newport Beach Club operates the bar and the restaurant using a management company, ARM Management.
But, so from our, from our application standpoint, could that other information be provided with respect to who, who the principals are with Velocity? And then following up with how the, through the management or how the restaurant, who's gonna, who's gonna, I guess, administer the liquor license, really? I mean, from, from that standpoint of, you know, if you do have a restaurant company coming in to manage it, that's, that's good. I mean, we're just trying to understand, you know, the, the responsibilities that come with having a liquor license and making sure that when they're issued, you know, we're not gonna have problems down the road.
Understood. And, and one of the issues that we would have is it would be difficult to prove negative that Mr., there is no document that says Mr. Tinsman does not have a role in terms of the operation of the restaurant or the bar. What we do have in our application is through ARM Management, all the tip certified managers, the assistant managers, and all the tip certified personnel. That's all included with the application, obviously. Those are the same individuals that have been running the Beach Club for years, and the same ones that have been administering to the, to the liquor license. That has not changed. Nothing in terms of the operation of the restaurant or the bar itself has changed based on Velocity buying that interest. As you said, it's not a parent company, but it's probably a good analogy.
Mr. Ryan?
Does Mr. Tinsman continue to have a financial interest in either Velocity LLC or the Newport Beach Club?
You would have a financial interest in Velocity LLC, which in turn, fair enough, has an interest in Newport Beach Club as well as?
So as far as ownership is concerned, it would be not unreasonable for an employee to perceive him as possibly having an employer role that is?
Yeah, that is possible. Certainly, I'm not privy to what someone perceived, but that is possible, sure. But I can assure you that Mr. Tinsman, through, through the, through the corporate structure, does not have a day-to-day management role in the restaurant or the bar.
Mr. Hamilton?
So would it be, suffice to say that Mr. Tinsman would no longer coerce female employees to consume alcohol during their shift, to, say, threaten their positions of, or possibly being fired or terminated if they didn't follow along with his request?
And I understand, I understand where you're going with that question. Of course, that would be part of what Mr. Tinsman is doing. I understand that that was in the police report. There were no charges based on those assertions in the police report. I guess one of the, one of the members of the council had known that it was individual law of behavior, certainly not proper.
Understood, but it still reflects poorly, this, I don't want this to reflect on the management, who have done a very good job over the past, I don't know, four or five years, and has really been up and running as the Beach Club with the, with the pool and the bar. But it reflects poorly on Velocity and the family. And we just, we can't have that type of atmosphere here in town.
And I can, as I mentioned, I can be sure that Mr. Tinsman is not gonna have a, a amount of money that's been put into this investment, not only through Velocity, but through the sales, that rather risk of the properties in there since Velocity took over. Mr. Tinsman is not going to have a, as I said, a day-to-day operation or management role in the restaurant or the bar. It's just not something that's called for in a documented basis.
Yeah, just get a little bit closer to the microphone, that's all. Thanks for something. Okay.
And certainly, the board has the ability to review. Usually, it's yearly when renewals come up, but that's generally, I mean, that's a statute requirement. That's minimal for a review.
It would be yearly minimal if an event like this were to happen again. You can imagine it would be immediate.
Of course. And that was, that was the point I was, I was going to add to, that certainly the board has the ability to, to address this again should there be, should there be an incident.
Mr. Dupree?
No.
What's that?
I would just say, Mr. President, that I have complete faith in our police department to have handled the matter in question, you know, reasonably, and, and dealt with the consequences appropriately. And I sort of see this as a different matter. I agree with Mr. Hamilton in that that's not the kind of behavior we want to condone, and hope that Mr. Tinsman learns from his mistakes. But I think we can defer to our police department to have dealt with the, the prior incident appropriately.
I just, just to confirm, the standard that we are to use in deciding this, Mr. Gavin, is, is suitability?
Correct.
And that definition is somewhat mushy.
The board has discretion in determining if a person is suitable to hold the liquor license, as long as there's any, you know, it can't be denied for no articulated reason, but the statutes give the licensing board discretion in making the determination of suitability.
I guess what I'm concerned about is the written documents in front of us doesn't, don't really contain the verbal assurances that you're giving from the stand, and that concerns me. So I'm leaning, so the suitability issue, it seems to me, given that you made this application with certain documents, and you have not changed those documents whatsoever, it seems like just a little odd, because?
And I understand what you're saying, but we don't, we don't have corporate documents that list what people don't do.
No, but you would have the ability to outline with the more?
If that were a condition, we could certainly provide an outline of that. I'm not really sure how I would do that, when, when the Newport Beach Club is an entity unto itself, and Velocity is a legitimate tester, that provides for management through ARM Management, the same managers that have been managing the club for several years. That hasn't changed, so I wouldn't have documentation showing a change in that management structure for?
I understand, but it just seems that, you know, you've submitted a written application. Between now and then, there hasn't been any change, and no additions to this written application, and, and so it just seems that the concerns raised by our police chief were not at all addressed, even though you've seen this for several weeks. So that, that's of concern to me, just because it seems like you're sitting here and saying, just take what we already accept, already submitted. It seems a little odd.
The last statement the Chief Lee makes in the annual report here, at least the one that we've been given, the application does not list any role that Patrick Tinsman may hold in the organization or pertaining to the new management of the Beach Club. So we know he has a financial interest, and therefore has influence in the organization, but we don't really know what his role is, or how, whether, or really have any assurance that this, you know, that he is not going to be in a position to repeat this kind of an episode.
His financial interest, and probably I should make that clear, is certainly not a direct financial interest. It would be a financial interest of his wife, Jennifer Tinsman, who is the sole holder of the interest in Velocity. Whether or not those, you know, quite frankly, I don't think the corporate documents will give you the guarantee that something like this would never happen again. I would wrongly believe that something like this would never happen again. But certainly, the corporate documents showing, showing the corporate structure would provide that sort of guarantee. Certainly, I can, I can assure you that he will not have, and does not have, a role in the restaurant management and the bar management that is reserved for ARM Management as hired through the Newport Beach Club. And that has been, that's been the way the club has been managed for many years, it's been very successful for many years, but for a single incident.
So his relationship with the Newport Beach Club and with the management of it has not changed then, or nor will it change with the transfer?
No, it's, it would be exactly the same.
All right. So the same circumstances that allowed this episode to occur will not change?
The circumstances that allowed the, the episode to occur, I'm not sure, certainly nothing in the, in the corporate structure has changed.
No. So we're transferring a license, we have this report in front of us, an episode occurred, and the transfer of the license does not change any of the, you know, any of the circumstances which resulted in this episode the first time?
Well, the only, the only circumstance that resulted in the episode was Mr. Tinsman being there, quite frankly.
And there's nothing that would keep him away from them?
Jennifer Tinsman is gonna continue to own Velocity and that, that majority interest in Newport Beach Club. The management of the Newport Beach Club, again, that will not change. That is gonna stay with ARM Management, which has been the manager for many years. We didn't see it, there isn't that, that should change, because that's been very successful. In terms of the circumstances which allowed the matter to happen, I think it's been mentioned as an individualized behavior by an individual that has been dealt with through the District Court of Rhode Island, it's been disposed of. I would certainly hope something like that would not happen again, regardless of the circumstance, or regardless of corporate structure.
Thank you. And it was Mr. Hall?
Correct.
All right. So just, just back to the application for, for a moment. I mean, so Jennifer Tinsman is listed as the president. Are there any other officers? Is there a vice president, a secretary, treasurer?
Velocity's in LLC, it's a Delaware LLC. It wouldn't be listed in such a fashion that it has core. We could, we could provide additional backup as to what the, what the corporate documents do include, but it's not gonna have Patrick Tinsman having some relationship to the?
No, no, I just, I mean, we're just, I guess this one's a little bit different when it's an LLC.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
So LLCs do not necessarily have to have a president, secretary, treasurer, and if they do, they don't need to be publicly named, neither do their members need to be named. But you do need to, if you're structured to have a manager, name your manager. And Mr. Patrick Tinsman is named as manager of Velocity NBC LLC on their filing with the Secretary of State's office. So on paper, he is the manager? It doesn't look like he's the signatory on doctrines, but?
Jennifer would be the signatory on the president. Patrick is listed as one of the managers. Patrick generally, I need to be frank, deals with the real estate for Velocity LLC, and more of the real estate that Jennifer and Patrick have in name. In fact, Patrick and Jennifer don't have a unit in the Newport Beach Club that they just bought, they manage, but for a amount of debt, they have several of the owners, the majority of them are in their name.
Okay. Mr. President? Mr. Hamilton?
I'm gonna try and piggyback on what Mr. Ryan was saying. I think what we're looking for is assurances that this is not gonna happen again.
And I can give you the assurance that, from everything I've seen, from everything that we've gone through with the police department, and from our direction, Mr. Tinsman, I can assure you.
And I will give you my assurance that if I am still sitting here and this happens again, the punishment will be swift and severe.
I think that's well-received at that rate.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the transfer.
A second. Motion's second.
I'm sorry, it's a public hearing, so?
I was gonna say, it's also a public hearing, so we need to?
My apologies. I draw the motion.
Mr. President, if I may, may I make one comment? Mind moving of transferring this license is to not punish the members of the Newport Beach Club for the actions of one individual. I hope that individual has learned his lesson and this doesn't happen again, but I do not want to punish the residents of Portsmouth and Newport Beach Club because of his actions.
I would add the employees of the Newport Beach Club to that as well. They don't deserve to be punished because of Mr. Tinsman's mistakes.
Well said. Thank you. So this is a public hearing, so are there any citizens that would like to speak to the, to the application for the transfer of the Class BV license? The desk, free time. That was once. Second time, are there any citizens that would, again, like to speak? And a final time, are there any citizens that would like to speak on the transfer of the Class BV beverage license? Okay, so there are none, so we have a?
Motion to?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made. Mr. Hall?
I don't want to complicate things, but does it, does it make any sense to put all three into?
We'll do them. The public hearing is for specifically for the?
Just the transfer.
Transfer, and then we'll do, we're still sitting as the Board of License Commissioners to do the rest of it.
So, Mr. Hamilton, and second by Mr. Katzman?
Right, so a motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero.
Now you gotta vote on the motion to transfer. That wasn't a motion to close the hearing.
Oh.
Oh.
Which I believe was already made, right?
Yes, you made and I seconded.
All right, so we now have a motion made in second to transfer the, the Class BV license. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the renewal of the Class BV alcohol beverage license. Is it a renewal, is it gonna be a new one?
It's a new one.
It's a new license for the Newport Beach, TNBC Beach Club LLC, doing business as the Newport Beach Club, 195 Newport Harbor Drive.
Second.
This motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero. And now on to our second item, which is the, the killer license. It's also for Newport Beach Club?
Sure.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve both fixtures license, annual licenses, the one for the TNBC Beach Club LLC, doing business as Newport Beach Club at 195 Harbor Drive, and also New England Homemade Donuts LLC, 2340 West Main Road.
Second.
Motion's been made in second for the approval of both particular licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the peddler's license for Pelagi Brothers Ice Cream LLC, one vehicle.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero.
And the last one is, Mr. President, I make a motion that we hold a public hearing for the application of a Class BVL beverage license for KJK LLC, doing business as Thriving Tree Coffee House at 706 Park Avenue, to be on the 28th of January. Does that give enough time to do the advertising?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Kristen is not here, is she? No, she's not?
No.
Okay. All right. So we, we have a motion and a second for the request of a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
A motion to adjourn from the Board of License Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to nothing. On to minutes. We have the minutes from our meetings of 11:13, 18, in executive session, as well as our minutes from 11:19, and only Mr. Hamilton, myself, and Mr. Ryan can vote on the?
Actually, that's not true.
Yeah, it's carryover, so they can vote on it.
Well?
Not the exact?
Not to poor people. Robert's rules allows you to vote on minutes for meetings at which you were not present. Yep.
Hope you don't have any comments on it.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from both the Town Council meeting and the executive session on 11:13, and also the Town Council meeting of 11:19.
Second.
This motion is made in second to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next item is our tax voucher. We have tax voucher 2018-12-10-01. Motion to approve.
Second.
This one made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero on the tax voucher. On to our Town Administrator's report. Mr. Ray?
Good evening, Mr. President, Council, ladies and gentlemen. With regard to first item, short-term rental ordinance update. The ordinance regarding the short-term rentals was passed last April, and the enforcement of that ordinance is to begin January 1st. We will issue a press release this week reacquainting the public with this issue. And additionally, we intend to release a request for proposals for a short-term, short-term rental compliance firm to help the town keep track of short-term rental properties and to ensure compliance with our ordinance. A major metric to be used in the selection of a potential bidder will be the firm's ability to fund their costs through anticipated revenue to be collected by compliant renters. With respect to the comprehensive plan, the planning board has now held a workshop for each of the 12 elements of the Portsmouth Community Comprehensive Plan. Review of the existing draft materials prepared by the town is essentially complete. Our contractor, Weston and Sampson, is now updating each element and believes they will have a finished draft complete for the planning board by the end of the month. Upon review of the draft, the planning board will schedule public hearings and forward a final draft to statewide planning for their review, after which the comp plan will be turned over to the Town Council for your review and public hearings. The planning board plans to have a public workshop on the completed draft on the last Wednesday in January. After the Town Council public hearings are complete, the comprehensive plan will be sent to statewide planning for final statewide, final state approval. With regard to the hazard mitigation plan, Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency has now reviewed the hazard mitigation plan and has sent it to FEMA for their review. The next steps will be FEMA will issue what's called an approval pending adoption, an APA, for the plan. The plan will have to be then formally adopted by the town by resolution after a public hearing. After that, we will send the signed resolution and the final plan to Rhode Island EMA to keep on file. Now with regard to our emergency operations center, since succeeding John King as our emergency management director, Ray Perry has been reviewing and working to update the emergency operations center standard operating procedures, our equipment inventories, the incident action plan, our EMA grant writing process, the emergency action administrative procedures, and the emergency management agency training program. In looking ahead, Ray will be working with the appropriate agencies and staff to update the EOC activation triggers and procedures, update and clarify the activation and use of warming shelters, and review the town's storm event preparation procedures, prepare an emergency management brief for senior and elected officials, and prepare an emergency management presentation for the public to be held next spring, which will also be a recruitment drive for new members of the agency. With respect to the Brown House, interest is growing with respect to utilization of office, potential office space in the Brown House. The recreation director is working with appropriate staff to develop a proposal for council review regarding use and pricing recommendations. We are working to put this on the agenda for your review in January. With regard to the Phelps House, when we issued the RFP for the Glen Stables and the Phelps House, we accepted a concessionaire for the operation of the stables, and we held for review a proposal for the operation of the Phelps House. That proposal is now with the town solicitor, and we will bring that proposal forward to the Town Council for your review and approval in January. the Town Council for your review and approval in January. With respect to the Cargill Shaw School Building, as you know, we've been working on a plan for the Cargill Shaw School Building since the termination of the Equidnic Island Christian Academy lease. Working with the recreation director, the facilities manager, the director of public works, our director of business development, have all together developed a town-issued pre-solicitation notice that provided information on the property and a set of objectives that the town hopes to achieve in improving and repurposing the property. Those objectives include improvement of the physical condition of the building, providing adequate staffing for protection of the facility and the safety of potential users, and the desire to establish and maintain a long-term relationship with any partner who contributes with the development and the use of the property. With limited town capital improvement funding, we are looking for innovative ways to gain grant funding and perhaps use public-private partnerships to defray the town's cost of needed work and repairs for the building. The RFP is now with the solicitor, and unless otherwise directed, we plan to release it later next month. With regard to the LED street lighting update, I reported at the last meeting that we have, well, correction, two meetings ago now, on the 26th of November, that we have been working on a streetlight conversion plan together with four other communities, Middletown, Jamestown, Smithfield, and Lincoln. Since that update, the town of Johnston has reached an agreement with National Grid regarding streetlights on state roads. Essentially, Johnston is no longer responsible to pay for electricity or maintenance of state lights on state roads. Considering this ruling, we have paused the RFP process until all five towns have had a chance to review the ruling with our respective solicitors and apply any new conditions as necessary to the future RFP, and I'll update the council as more information is forthcoming. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. On to our resignations and appointments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended my resignation to the AIPC the day after the election. I didn't think I needed to provide it to the town, but there it is.
All right, so we need a motion.
I move that we accept Mr. Katzman's resignation from the AIPC Board.
Second.
And advertise. Have we already done that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept the resignation in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All abstained. The motion passes five, zero, and one abstentions. Next, we have appointments. We have an appointment to the Bristol Ferry Town Common. There are five vacancies. We currently have one applicant, Mr. Lawrence Walsh.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero. And we have a reappointment to the tax assessment review board, Board of Review.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Atkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero. Thank you. On to old business. Old business number one. We touched base a little earlier. It's a discussion action motion to approve Town Administrator's priority reviewed at our December 8th meeting. Ms. Ujafuza?
Right, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also mention that on Saturday, in addition to setting priorities, so we also had the Town Council 101 presentation by an attorney, and I would encourage the public to view that video. It gives a good overview of what the Town Council is supposed to be doing and what our limitations are and what our procedure should be. It's fundamental that a Town Council set priorities for a Town Administrator in order to properly undertake his review, and so one of the most basic things we can do to promote transparency is to let the people, is to let the public understand what that plan is. So, Mr. Rayner presented on Saturday quite a long list of work that he's undertaking, priorities, but in order to really have priorities, we must, we felt that they needed to be narrowed. We could not vote at that Saturday meeting, and we are, that's why it's being voted on at this meeting, and it will be the five priorities we discussed, and they are, I'll let Mr. Rayner present those.
With respect to our discussion of Town Administrator goals on December 8th, which was Saturday, I was asked to narrow that list down. We agreed that the top five priorities, and the priorities are nested in the strategic goals that was provided to the Town Council on the 8th. Those top five priorities in order were budget, capital improvement plan, collective bargaining, the comprehensive plan, and the police station. I was asked to also delineate some metrics. I forwarded that to the council today for your review.
Mr. President, I would move that we adopt priorities as discussed and as presented. As far as the metrics go, I think that they're a good statement of how we would measure the goals, but I don't know that we need to adopt the metrics. I think we can simply adopt the goals and policies stated. So, that's my motion to accept the goals and priorities as we discussed and as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kat. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay.
I think the only discussion would be this. Manny, do you have these, so you could put them up, so people could read them? Or should we read them off?
Do we have a clean list from Saturday?
No, I have a clean list from this afternoon.
You know that Rich sent.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I have it on my computer screen, if you'd like me to read it aloud.
I have it. So, budget, number one priority is the budget, and presenting a balanced budget within 1% of the annual percentage growth rate, or CPI, which currently stands somewhere around 2%. I'm not going to average them all out for the month of the year. It's somewhere in that ballpark. It ranges from 2.43 down to 0.97 through the year. Secondly, updating the capital improvement plan to incorporate the 2018 facilities assessment findings that is currently being finalized into the five-year plan. Third is presenting a newly renegotiated collective bargaining agreements with the Fire and PMEA units to the council for approval prior to the July 1st ending of these contracts. Finalizing the comp plan to provide staff, resources, and time with personnel to support the completion of the draft comp plan to be ready for the public hearings by midsummer of 2019, and to finalize the police station and have it moved in ready by 2019, March 2019, and to be within 2.5% of the projected budget. So, those are the actual goals. And, Ms. Manny, can you, Rich, can you send that to Manny and have it put on...
Correct. I'll do that.
...the website, so that it's there for everybody to see.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. President, I'd like to make reference to the, I think it's a five or six-page document that the Town Administrator provided, which I think shows a great deal how much resources, care, and thought went into the development of this succinct list, and the public, I think, should know how hard the Town Administrator is working to diligently put thought into how these were written. I would recommend that be made public as well. I mean, it is technically a public document, but...
I think it was, that was part of Saturday's.
That was Saturday's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that part of the minutes or what have you for Saturday?
I haven't done the minutes yet.
Ah. Very good. So, it'll be up on...
Wait, you didn't spend your Sunday doing that?
If we could possibly just attach them both to this agenda item, so it's there in one place, easily found.
Yeah. Okay. So, we have discussion.
There's a motion in a second.
Motion, second for discussion.
I guess I would just want to ask, why would you not want to include the proposed metrics in part of our approval?
Metrics, unlike goals and policies, thank you for the question, metrics can evolve pending circumstances if, I'll make it up, if suddenly the CPI explodes to 25% for reasons that don't necessarily impact the town that way, we might want to have a different measurement.
Yeah, but soaking goals and priorities. I think the goals and priorities are kind of meaningless unless we approve the metrics as Mr. Rayner has proposed them, and so I would, I would move that we approve the metrics as Mr. Rayner approves.
I have no objection. That's fine. So, if you would make an amendment...
I would amend your motion to approve the proposed metrics as Mr. Rayner has...
And I would second that amendment.
Now, let's see if the Staggy R paid attention Saturday.
I was going to say, wait a minute, don't we have to vote?
See if you paid attention Saturday. Hang on.
I got my chi-chi.
Now, we have to vote, because we can't...
Well...
You can discuss the amendment.
We can discuss the amendment, so we have to...
Sorry, you missed all this excitement on Saturday.
It was so exciting that I did not retain much. So, we're voting on the amendment.
I meant to add the metrics.
Yes. So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, the amendment passes six to zero.
And now...
Now, back to the original motion.
Which is now as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amended motion passes six to zero.
Good job.
On to...
Mr. Roberts would be proud of that.
Yeah. On to old business number two. Again, Ms. Ujafuza?
Right, so each year, the Town Council and the school committee meet with our state legislators, usually in very early January, to prevent, present our legislative priorities. In the past, we have not had the opportunity to vote on the, on the priorities, and they've just been presented as sort of our individual asks, and especially in light of the Town Council 101 message that we should act not as individuals but as a board. We discussed the legislative priorities, and we are going to vote on them tonight so that they can be presented on behalf of the entire Town Council to our state legislators. We, I, so, and each year, for the last two of the year, so this is the third year, Council Ryan and I have submitted the same priorities after discussing them with constituents, staff, and with our state legislators. So, I would like to present the first four. I believe Council Ryan will take the next two. There is a one new, one new legislative priority that was brought to us, our attention by staff. That would be the third one. So, I'll start with the first one priority, and that is to improve safety on state roads. As you can see, as all of you are well aware, we do have a state transportation improvement program, TIP, which is a priority list that the state, that the Town Council does advocate certain things be placed on, but we would urge our state legislators to help us to advocate more strongly that our current TIP priorities, including East Main Road and the, the light at Oakland Farms, for example, be scheduled to occur sooner than currently scheduled. So, that would be the first item, is to ask our state legislators to advocate more strongly for improved safety on state roads. I guess, I can just do them as a group, I guess. The second one is to fix the broken legislative process. We urge our state legislature to advocate for changes to fix problems such as rushed and last-minute legislative review and passage of legislation, and failure of bills with the majority's support of people in the state to leave committees for floor votes, these and other procedural problems, whatever your substantive state legislative concerns. We believe there's a consensus that they must be fixed. So, that would be my second one, fix the broken legislative process. The third, this is a very specific one, but it's important to our town. We want legislation, and this echoes, incidentally, the, the resolution that the Town Council passed earlier. Legislation should be introduced to clarify that real estate property taxpayers are not entitled to appeal the valuation of their property each year, but may only challenge the value in the year of the last update or revaluation, as indicated in the 2001 amendments to Sections 44-5-15 and Section 44-5-26. That is something that would, is, has not been an issue yet because property values have been rising. However, it could definitely put our tax assessor in a bind should the property values start to fall again. The fourth one is to seek infrastructure funding that can help our local businesses. We are finding that Stringham Road and Burma Road may have diminishing Navy maintenance done on them. We have major marine trade industries that, that have been identified by the governor and countless legislators as key economic, as key economic businesses that deserve support, and so Stringham and Burma Road maintenance becomes vital, and we want to make sure that the state provides the money rather than putting that burden on our town. And in particular, I would recommend that our state legislators urge that Commerce Corporation start putting some money towards those roads in the same way that Mass Works does in Massachusetts, because frankly, I'm not happy with the kind of no strings attached corporate welfare that comes through the corporation, Commerce Corporation, and we should be investing in infrastructure that stays here, and especially on Burma and Stringham Road, I mean, Stringham and Burma Road. So, those would be the four, and I'll turn it over to Council Ryan to do...
Can we vote on those four first?
Sure.
Because...
Are we going to vote on them in a block? Or you could take them one at a time, whatever?
Well, I would say there are five at the end that might be able to be combined with two of those, so I don't know if it's necessary to have them all as 12 separate items. Mr. President, what would you think?
Well, when we, when we talked about this on Saturday, this was the fear of trying to consolidate the list, because there were some that overlap. So...
Santa Claus!
Santa's stopping.
Could you just pause for a moment?
Then...
Let the minutes reflect.
Santa, bye.
Everyone, get a candy.
You're not on the good list, Mr. Ryan. I've heard, I've heard. In all seriousness, back to Ms. Abbott's comment, I think...
Item seven and item eight could probably consolidate it, so maybe we should discuss those, or, I don't know. We can go all in order and then come back.
Well, seven and eight are essentially the same as one.
Right.
And four.
Yeah. One, four, seven, eight could all be reworded into one concise item.
I, I'd rather that, I think it could...
I would, I would say two.
Without having to reword anything or task somebody to reword anything, I think that, taken as a group, they express our, our positions on those items. I would just move that items one, two, three, four, seven, and eight be adopted by the council.
But I, I think seven and four are essentially the same, and one and eight are essentially the same. So, I think we...
Did I get the numbers wrong?
Yeah, so one and seven are combined.
The, uh, one, is it one and seven? No, one and, one and eight, and four and seven.
But, but in any event, it's still one, two, three, four...
Seven.
Seven and eight. And leave the combining to the legislature. Just, that way we don't have to task somebody with rewriting something.
First, may. I don't have that task, so.
Right.
Well, so it was one, two...
There is some wording in eight that is not included in one or four, so I would...
What is?
There's some wording in eight that is not included in one or four, so as long as the whole list goes through legislators, that's fine.
Right. That's my motion, one, two, three, four, seven, eight, adopted by the council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adopt one, two, three, four, seven, and eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have questions? Mr. Fitzmaurice?
Mr. President, Lawrence Fitzmaurice, 50, Kristen Court. You went through this rather quickly, and when you started referring to them as numbers, I have no idea which ones you're talking about. Do we still have this business of the state aid to education, the student funding formula business, the annual reduction, is that in there?
Not yet. Well, it's on the list.
It is not among the ones, not among... We haven't gotten to it yet.
Yeah. That was, it was discussed by myself and Mr. Katzman as an, as a priority.
On Saturday.
On Saturday.
I know it was discussed on Saturday. I didn't have the opportunity.
It was not among the ones that you voted on.
Okay. That's the one I want to speak to, so let me know when it's...
You got it, you got it. Okay. Ms. Roberts?
Peter Robert, Tadya, Amara Avenue. It was brought up about safety on the roads, and we talked about a traffic light up the road, but where we really need one is right here, because behind this place, we have an elderly home for disabled people, and trying to get over there to get a bus or get off a bus and get back over here is unbelievable. And this has been brought up many times, and there's no reason why handicapped people using walkers and anything else should have to cross the street over here and then climb up on a curb. That should be taken care of first, and it's up to this town council to do that. You need to tell the state, get it done, because if you ever come here, sit down here and watch what the people have to do out here, it's ridiculous. They, they don't deserve that, okay? They should be able to cross the street, have a flat area to get down, have somewhere to sit, and have a button they can push, so a light will come on, so they can cross the street without worrying about their life. Please do this. It's been brought up so many times, and it still has not been done.
Mr. President, may I comment?
Yes, Ms. Yer.
Yeah, I just, one of the ones that we just approved is, addresses security, safety implementations on East Main Road specifically, and one of the suggestions is to consider implementing a complete streets approach, where when roads like East Main Road get redeveloped, it doesn't get redeveloped just for cars, you take into account pedestrians, bicycles, people that have to wait at a bus stop, and they are, and you're required to look at all the users of the road and just not, and not just cars. I have a big issue with our bus stops, for example, where, well, they're nonexistent.
This has been brought up many times.
I agree, and I think it's a matter of...
And this has gone on and on and on, and these people's lives are in danger.
Yes.
So, no, we shouldn't have to wait for anything. Tell them to get it done. Make a scene about this. These people are risking their life for us in the street, and nobody cares. It's not when they finally do it, that could take a long time.
Ms. Roberts?
These people, I've seen them stand over there for a long time, I have got out of my car, went across that street, and walked them back. Nobody else is doing that. So, don't say, wait until they get here and do it, they're not doing it. Look what they did to Island Park. They took the turn lane out of it, okay? And right across the street, they could have put a lane where the tree is falling down. They didn't have to put millions of dollars into that. We need to tell them what to do in our town, and all you're doing is riding on something else. No, tell them to get it done. These people need the right to be able to cross the street.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I do think we do care. The statement that we don't care, I would disagree with that. We do care, and we will pursue this with our legislators and ask that it be looked at. It is a State Traffic Commission, and we do have to go through the, through the proper channels.
Mr. President, I know the specific issue of this being a bus stop here has been raised before with, between the town and DOT, and I don't know what other parties might be involved.
Ripped it as well.
Yeah.
Tried to change the bus stop to actually pull onto Middle Road and stop here and go down, and it's, it's been a tough uphill battle with both, with all the authorities up north.
But we can continue to pursue it. I agree that it is a problem. I don't think anyone up here denies it's not a problem, but we will try to do our part to see if we can get that corrected. Okay, so, we had one, two, three, four, seven, eight. Were we jumping to Mr. Ryan?
We voted on those, right?
We did.
We did, yes.
You voted on...
One, two, three, four, seven, eight. You voted on one, two, four, seven, and eight.
One, two, three.
Three, four, seven, eight.
One, two, three.
Three, four, seven, eight.
So, five in your own.
Shall we vote at five and six, Mr. President?
Yes, I'm just trying to find five and six. Go.
So, the next on our list has to do with funding healthcare in the state of Rhode Island. The first resolution I'd like to encourage our legislators to work on is to prevent any further cuts to Medicaid. Twice in the last few years, our state has elected to cut Medicaid funding, which covers the medical care of one out of four children in the state and 60% of total nursing home costs. By doing this, we've not only imperiled the healthcare that these people receive, we've also turned away matching federal funds, which is millions of dollars that the federal government would otherwise be giving Rhode Island to take care of these people, and I think we need to encourage our legislators not to balance the budget on the backs of the most vulnerable, the poorest members of our society here. The second thing I'd like to advocate for is that the state take a serious look at a single payer insurance, health insurance system. Canada has had this since 1972, was pioneered in the single province of Saskatchewan, which roughly has the same population as Rhode Island. It was so successful there, the federal government of Canada adopted it within 10 years. It's estimated credibly that up to a third of our healthcare budget is wasted on administrative churn and corporate profits, and could be better invested in actually providing for the care of the people in this country. Another benefit of it is that one of the major financial worries of all municipalities in Rhode Island is OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. With the single payer system, OPEB vanishes, it's already taken care of. So, every other industrialized country in this world, except for the United States, offers some form of guaranteed health insurance, and I think we need to encourage our legislators to at least study this and actually work for it in the state. We can't, Rhode Island can't force the rest of the country to listen to reason, but we can lead by example. The number six item would be to help close the Rhode Island budget deficit by reversing the tax cut that was passed under the governorship of Donald Carceri with the assistance of Gordon Fox, who has since shown how trustworthy he is. It was a 50% tax cut on people making more than $336,000 annually. This was supposed to spur the state's economy in some nebulous way. It did not do that, but it did force every municipality in the state to immediately raise their property taxes. Since the municipalities were immediately subject to a cut in the amount of money coming back from the state because of this tax cut, we had to continue to support our school systems, and the only recourse we had was to raise property taxes, which falls disproportionately on the backs of lower-income earners. So, I would like to encourage our legislators to seriously consider reversing these tax cuts, which have done nothing to improve the economy of the state, but have certainly caused a great deal of budget woe in municipalities such as Portsmouth.
Motion to approve items five and six as priorities for our legislate, state legislators.
Second.
Discussion? I can't vote them as, vote for those as a whole. I do agree with not cutting Medicare funding. Having worked in the, on the supply side of the group home and nursing home business, I did see and have seen what those budget cuts have done, and it's, it's just got awful. The fact that we have CNA's getting paid eight, nine, $10 an hour to do the job that they do is criminal, but I am not currently in favor of doing a single payer healthcare system at this point in time, because I don't necessarily believe it's going to help us control costs. It may. If the idea is to possibly just study it and come back with findings, sure, let's look into it, but to flat-out implement it at this point in time, to be honest with you, I don't trust our state to do it right.
Yeah, I think any implementation would have to have a study commission to actually figure out where the money's, how the money's going to flow and how it would be funded. Yeah, so I think that's implicit, that it requires a study commission.
So, I would like to separate out.
Okay.
If we could, Ms. Ujifusa, this was your, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Let's just, yeah.
And we'll do, vote on five A and five B and six separately?
You have your numbers wrong. It's just five A is what you want.
I want to vote on five A, and then vote on five B, and then vote on six. I want to, I want to vote on each of the three items separately, individually.
Before we vote, though, I think...
I need a second first.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Speaking about cuts, some of the problems we have with that too are illegals. They pay absolutely no taxes. They pay nothing into Social Security, they pay nothing into Medicaid and Medicare, and they pay nothing into anything. So, if you're going to cut one side, let's stop working on the other side, because they're here living off our dime. When they go to a doctor, who pays for them? We do. They don't pay for anything, and our government spends money protecting them. Let's stop it.
I move the question.
So, the amendment is to, vote on the three items separately.
Correct.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, so now we'll take five A.
Five A.
Yep. So, we have a motion.
There is, well, the amendment separated them out, basically made three main motions that we will vote on.
Correct.
So, we don't need to make the motions again?
So, all in favor of A?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. B, support single payer, improve Medicare for all, health insurance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, it's, the motion passes five to one, and then for six, we're going to help close the RI budget deficits by reversing past failed trickle-down tax cuts to the wealthy.
I didn't make any comment on this, but I, I won't vote for it either. I don't think we should be raising taxes on anybody. There's plenty of room in the state to cut and cut the budget and cut taxes. We have a million people in the state and a $9.5 billion budget. Other states of equal size have half the budgets.
Mr. President, I, I'll be supporting this, not because I'm in favor of raising taxes, but because I'm opposed to trickle-down economics, which has been proven to fail. The Kansas experiment is a dramatic example where the state went all in on trickle-down economics. It doesn't work.
Thank you, discussion.
Mr. President, I'd also like to say we specifically said we are not arguing that no cuts are necessary or proper in the state or town budget, we are simply asking that this failed policy be reversed.
Okay, so, all those in favor of six?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes five to one.
I can make a pass for the other ones.
Oh, seven, we already did.
All right, so now we're going to, we're going to jump down to number nine, 10, 11, 12, Ms. Abbott?
Mine are clearly much simpler. So, I will just read.
Thank you.
Support initiatives that encourage and fund food composting efforts, expanding work happening in Newport and Middletown, and possibly piloting municipal-level food scrap composting in Portsmouth, including residential, commercial, and school food waste. Well, trash is not a new topic in Portsmouth. Composting food scraps can reduce the weight of your waste by up to 40%, so I believe strongly that supporting municipal composting efforts, or at least looking at alternatives to our waste system, are worthwhile endeavors, and I would like to see our state legislators support any of those efforts that go to the State House, and I believe there will be some coming in the next year. So, that's number nine. Did you want to vote on them one at a time, or?
I think so.
Okay.
We'll vote on them one at a time.
Let's do it.
So, that's a motion.
Can I make a motion on?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve number nine.
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, number 10. Increase efforts and funding to support projects that address the impacts of sea level rise on coastal communities and increase resilience of municipal infrastructure in the face of climate change. We are a coastal community with a lot of waterfront properties, including town-owned waterfront properties, and I think it's important for us to consider increasing resilience in the face of sea level rise over the next 20, 30, 50 years.
Can I ask that we add to your motion to request that they also work with our federal delegation to ensure proper infrastructure funding coming from the federal government?
Absolutely, yes.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
One more time.
To work with our federal delegation to secure proper federal funding for infrastructure projects.
I mean, I'd be even open to adding, you know, more specific language in terms of pursuing grants and so on and so forth, but that might not be necessary.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Ms. Roberts, you have it.
Peter Robert, Tadya, Amara Avenue. I just want to mention something, it was mentioned sea level rise. And why did we pay a million dollars for a piece of property of an old Crystal Ferry Landing, and they're talking about millions of dollars to redo the walls around it, when it's going to be flooded? If you really believe in it, what are you spending money on this stuff for? It's already had a million dollars spent on it, and it's going to be flooded. Do you really believe in this? Because if you do, then we shouldn't be spending any money on this. We are throwing money away, and you sit here talking about it. Either it exists or it doesn't. If it exists, then we shouldn't be spending money. So, do you really believe?
Mr. President, thank you. I know at least one entity that, quote, believes in climate change, and that is the United States Department of Defense, the Pentagon. Our nation's safety is dependent on understanding that climate change is real and sea level rise is happening. I, you can go right to the Department of Defense website, and it talks about mission-critical issues. So, I would certainly side with the United States Navy, which has a separate task force for climate change and is a long-term partner with the communities on the island to support this measure. And of course, it's all dependent on our state legislature and the federal government doing anything which...
I move we approve number 10.
I think sort of move in second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I move the question.
Move in second, I amended it, so.
Sorry. Then I move the question.
In 1967, 5,000 scientists signed a petition telling the Pentagon not to use Agent Orange, and President Johnson used it anyways, and I have a result of that, okay? And I've lost three brothers because of it and a lot of friends. That's what the Pentagon did, okay? And they knew it was poison, and everything to do with global warming and everything is only maybe, there are no facts. There are absolutely no facts.
That's your opinion, Mr. Roberts.
Now, that's not my opinion. I've read the paperwork. There's no opinion to it.
Mr. Roberts?
It's a possibility. It could be. When you read possibility, it could be, that's not fact.
Point of order, Mr. President. The motion was just made by Ms. Ujifusa to move the previous question. We must now proceed to vote on that.
Yes, we're going to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
It wasn't an amendment, it was just an addition. It was just an addition.
Yep.
Ms. Abbott was nice enough to add my wording to the end of her request.
His thoughts, they're simpatico.
What number are we on?
Number 11.
Okay, 11. Work on economic development programs to help integrate Portsmouth into quidnic island tourism programs, for example, waterfront redevelopment, West Side Master Plan, including dealing with the Navy properties, bike paths, and other recreational infrastructure. I know the state, you know, having our state legislators work with the state and the Navy to help us move things along on the west side would be beneficial. I know there are a lot of bike path projects involved, you know, included in the state tip that will be coming online in the next year or two, and I would like our state legislators to be committed to helping see those through for the benefit of Portsmouth. So, I make, I move that we approve number 11.
Second.
Motion made second for number 11. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six to zero, and number 12?
Number 12. Sorry, I have to look up the acronym here.
For what?
SCORP.
No.
So, number 12 is work with DM to understand results of the state's SCORP, which stands for statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan survey, and how recreational deficiencies should be addressed in Portsmouth. The state is undertaking a survey to address all outdoor recreation needs throughout the state, including parks, bike paths, so on and so forth. Anyone in the public is welcome to take the survey and answer the survey. I would like our state legislators to stay on top of it, see the results when they come out, and see how Portsmouth is portrayed within the scope of the survey, and how we can address some of those recreational deficiencies. So, I would move that we approve number 12.
Second.
Apparently, the one thing we missed last year was pickleball.
So, I hear, so I hear.
Have we thrown pickleball in there? We might have got some...
We'd be okay.
So, we have a motion and a second on number 12. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. What we also discussed on Saturday, or, do you have any question?
I believe we kind of have a combined one that...
If I may, Mr. President. So, no matter what anyone's opinion may be on the viability of the legalization of recreational marijuana, I think it is foreseeable that Rhode Island might at some point adopt such a law. What I would want our state legislature to bear in mind, and this is my motion in terms of adopting a position, is that any scheme would provide for a municipality which is the site of any licensed recreational marijuana sales facility. the site of any licensed recreational marijuana sales facility have some financial, have some tax system that comes back to municipalities, much in the same way as hotel tax does, so that Portsmouth, for example, would, if we were to bear any additional costs due to police or what have you, we would have additional resources to address them.
Okay. I'll get you, Tim.
Thank you.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Just like to say that I realize this mo, this initiative doesn't have anything to do with our encouraging the state legislature to legalize marijuana. Yes, we do tax the hotel industry, but the hotels don't cause traffic accidents. Mind-altering drugs do. And this is a drug that has very little science to back its use in any therapeutic, except for very narrow ones such as encouraging or improving the appetite in terminally ill people. I do not think this is a good thing for the state to be doing, and I would like to register that before we take a vote on potentially receiving revenues from the sale of this plant. Thanks.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And I believe the other one that we discussed on Saturday was related to the, to the school aid formula?
Yeah.
We would be...
Well, two options. One is better working out the school aid formula, and Mr. Katzman has the specific language in the state law. But I would also like on top of that to see state fundings to individual cities and towns restored. Eight years ago, we were cut $2 million just in straight state aid. If we were given back that state aid, we would not have a tax increase here in the state or in Portsmouth. And Governor Orlando, when she first ran and took office, stated that one of her goals was to reduce the reliance on property taxes and on the property taxpayers here in the state, and we've yet to see one bit of help in the past four, five years. So I would like her to stick to her word and bring some relief to the property taxpayers of Portsmouth and other communities.
If I may add on to that, thank you, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. President. The tax cap law in Rhode Island, started by the adoption in the legislature of Title 44, Chapter 45, it was a very simple idea. I can quote the language, but I won't bore folks with legislative ease, but it embodies a very simple concept. Property taxes is a bad way to pay for schools because it's inequitable. So the state is going to force communities to live under a cap. In exchange for that, the state was going to provide more money to the communities to fund it, such that they would, and this is from the language of the law, equally share with the municipalities. We don't here in Portsmouth receive anything remotely close to equally shared costs. I would get roughly 10% of our education dollars from the state. So I don't expect the state to turn around and just hand us 40%, 40% of our education costs. But we're living up to our end of the bargain by living within the tax cap, and the state needs to live up to its end of the bargain and address a better equitable formula.
Okay. Are you going to word that properly for clerk?
I move, yeah, sure.
Are you going to look at me to do that?
So I would move that we adopt, as one of our legislative priorities, that the state legislature live up to its promise, as expressed in Rhode Island General Law 44-45.
And also reinstate state aid to individual cities and towns?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
So that's a motion.
And that's a second.
Motion in a second. Mrs. Fitzmaurice?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be more direct with Mr. Katzman. Taxpayers got mugged in this business, and taxpayers in this town got substantial mugged. Mr. Hamilton pointed out, and I'll go through the details. This is about, the state is reducing state aid education down in Portsmouth by about a quarter of a million a year. And that's additive. Each year, it goes down a quarter of a million or so. It's actually more than that, but I'll use that around now. We're approaching the end of this. It is, is a cost transfer from the state in effect. They're taking the money from us, and they're giving it to somebody else they think is more deserving. They gridded up what is called a student aid formula, which is, all you need to do is look at a map of where the communities are that lose money, that are all in East Bay with exception of American, because they weren't getting any money to begin with. And it's all going somewhere else. We, when that happens to us, the taxpayer's been asked each year to cover those losses in the school department budget. There was one year, I think, where there was some funding from the state trying to reduce that, but that's why out of 10. There's rumors that they're going to rework and produce another student formula and continue this process. So this is a high priority. It's what in your list, number 13, or 14, or 15? 14, or 15? There are some other things that I would frankly think is a little frivolous, but this one needs to be at the top of your list. If you're going to get any attention, it has to be in the top five. This is one that directly affects the taxpayers in this town. You as a body will add this 250, probably what, 270,000 this next year? But anyway, it's somewhere around there, to the tax base to cover this loss. You're going to do that as a body when you vote on the budget sometime in late June. So this is a, this is something that comes right home to the people in this town, and we need a little more consideration for it. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, the remarks of the speaker are well-posed. I spoke about this on the campaign trail. I can assure you and this body and the citizens of Portsmouth, this is not the last time that I intend to address this specific issue, that this is a general list of priorities. But getting, moving the needle on this issue is going to take a lot more than handing over a list of pri, as part of list priorities. I intend to work with other communities throughout the state that are similarly situated throughout Rhode Island to try to build a consensus in this, in the way of foreshadowing, anticipate seeing this issue again before this body.
Thank you, Mr. Captain.
Mr. President, I will also add that our list does have 13 items on them, but they're not in order of importance or any particular specific order, because I agree, it certainly wouldn't be at the bottom of the list if it was in order of importance. I think that would just be, take a lot of time to put them in order of, you know, priorities.
I'll admit, I was in charge of putting the list together, and I was cutting it, I was cutting and pasting, and so it, comments well-taken. We agree with Mr. Fitzmaurice, this is one of the top priorities, and I believe the school department will also have it at the top of their list, so it's... If I may, Mr. President. Mr. Katzman, if your vision of future activities is to work with other communities to do this, might I suggest that perhaps at our next meeting, you could proffer a resolution that we could actually hand out to all the other residents?
I intend to do that. I don't know that it will be, if I may, Mr. President. I don't know that that would be ready by our next meeting. But it is something that is a priority of mine and requires some organization. I don't want to just spring my resolution on other communities. I intend to reach out to individuals and be approached.
I'd be more than happy to help you reach out to individuals around the state.
Thank you.
Because, and getting it into the docket sooner rather than later in the budget process of state would be helpful, I would think.
Excellent. Good ideas.
Still would fall on deaf ears, but, you know, we could try.
Well, the idea is to build a groundswell.
Yep.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Was it a two-parter?
No.
It was just an addition. Again, I'm just tagging on to people.
All right. So are we good with our, we're good with our state legislative priorities?
We are.
We are going to move on to our monthly police update. Mr. Swatzky?
Good evening. Mark Zowatsky, Senior Project Manager, representing ABM Group, your owner's program and project manager for the new police station project. Would just launch right into it?
Launch right in, go for it.
Well, I see some new faces here. I don't know if there are any questions from the committee members or council members, I'm sorry. If there are, I'd be more than happy, you know, this, I expect this to be a two-way dialogue, not just me telling you what you already know. So if there are any questions, I'll take them, otherwise I can just launch right into it.
I have one, it's my major concern, and it kind of whispered in your ear on the way in.
Oh, you didn't whisper, sir.
Well, Brian heard me, too. My concern, and I drove by today, and I saw last week they were working on the site. The goal was to have binder down before today, and we're still doing general site work. Are we going to make the deadline, you know, the deadlines before they close the asphalt plants?
It's a really good question. I'm not here with an answer for you, but I can tell you what site activities have gone on and what efforts have occurred toward that goal. Before I tell you that, obviously, we as the owner, me as your representative, we cannot dictate means, methods, techniques, or sequences to the contractor. All we can basically do is watch them fail or watch them succeed. Toward that end, they have had, have made a significant, have made significant progress with the site. All the underground utilities are now in, the connections to the middle of the street are in, water, sanitary, everything's in. Right now, they're faced with a little bit of frost. They've done a tremendous amount of fine grading, which is a condition precedent to placing binder, and they own some, they're, as an entity, they own some ground-warming thermal membranes, blankets, if you will, and they have the ability to heat the earth to eliminate any frost or to mitigate the frost, to remove it so that they can. They're working as an entity to do what they can, to get binder down prior to asphalt plants closing or prior to, you know, more of the same winter conditions. I had a conversation with the general superintendent and project manager today regarding this topic, and with the anticipated temperatures on Thursday and Friday, it's their hope goal, and they're really working very hard in order to place binder down on Friday. So are they going to do it? I can hope, I hope so, but I can't make them do it, and I certainly don't want them to do something that is going to yield failure, that is placing bituminous or asphalt on frozen ground.
Agreed.
So.
Looks like next week might be warmer, though.
Yeah. And if, the plants will stay open as long as they can without incurring tremendous amount of costs, so, you know, the December 15 closing date for asphalt plants is usually a rule of thumb. Some winters, it's gone into January, others, they've closed in November, and they're taking it day by day. These extended weather forecasts, I agree with you, appear favorable, but again, we don't dictate those means and methods. Our contract with them, you know, has them performing the work in accordance with the acceptable standards.
Without binder, we're not opening in March.
Okay. So, relative to my report, in November, given that this was my monthly report, in November, the contractor very much transitioned from enclosing the building to concentrate on installing interior finishes, including flooring, ceilings, millwork, paint, also detention systems are very much underway. Outside, fine grading of the site was underway as of the end of the month and working very hard towards binder. Both gas, water services are connected. National Grid has accepted the pad and underground electric for the transformer. Initially, N-Grid was going to place the transformer in the last week of November. They've deferred that for another week or so, so we won't have permanent power until National Grid places their transformer. As discussed at the last meeting, the police department is looking forward to moving into the building over the weekend of March 2, 3 of 2019, and demolition of the existing building is to follow, with final grading, parking lot, plantings deferred until later on the spring. So that's the schedule update. If there are any questions regarding schedule, more than happy to field those. If not, I can move on to the overall project budget. So you have both the overall project budget. You have my synopsis of the construction cost, which is the major component of it. Over the course of the November timeline, the only change to the overall project budget was an increase to the anticipated, to the line item related to the underground storage tank. Did a little bit more research, and we increased the cost of removing, mitigating, and formally closing that at $15,000 in lieu of $7,500. So that's still, that's within the overall project budget. It didn't yield any adverse consequences, meaning we didn't exceed the $10 million bond approval for that. So at this point, the remaining contingency is $7,996. However, we do have, in my documents, this one here with the big arrow in it, document, because I indicated to you the last time I appeared before you, that I was going to give you a forecast to complete. What you have in front of you, the document dated today, is that forecast. There are three major categories. Category one are change order requests that are currently known. They are the AZEC trim, the fire-rated chase enclosures, the screen at the roof of the rooftop unit, the maintenance garage door change, it's not the exterior door, it's an interior door, dimmer controls, portico and other site safety lighting, duct smoke detectors, and other lighting systems. Those are known. They are in front of the architect and their engineers. Their, four of them have been reviewed affirmatively by them and the cost validated. So they are pretty much, they need to be incorporated within the project budget. However, we have a little bit of a conundrum. We had a $10 million bond allocation. Our overall project budget was $10 million, and the acceptance of anything more than $7,996 will create a situation where there are insufficient funds to pay for them. So this estimate of cost to complete, this forecast, that includes other potential change orders not yet submitted or, and/or quantified, but likely, we have estimated at $95,000. And we also have some additional services for the firm that I represent, bringing the overall requested supplemental funds from the council to add to the overall project budget to a number of $203,985.75. I would like to note that if this, if these funds are approved from your 2018 surplus, which doesn't impact your tax levy, to my understanding, if these funds are approved and any of these $203,985.75 are not required, they will revert back to the town's general fund. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions with regard to the request. I did have a... I did have a, uh, sample proposed resolution within my packet. Uh, I can read it or, or not. And perhaps, you know, I can make the suggestion, uh, that someone make the motion and then, uh, second it and then we can have discussion on it and then we can kind of go from there.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to, if I may ask the town administrator a question.
Yes.
First of all, thank you very much for, uh, the presentation of the, of the report. And I, I just want to understand what's being asked. Is to approve, uh, the dollar amount, 203, et cetera, in addition to monies that have been previously approved to accomplish these specific elements that are necessary to complete the project. I'd like to have a better understanding of where that money, in the 20, in the fiscal year budget in which we live now, where is that money, uh, from?
Where'd it come from?
Going to, where'd it come from? What, so, yeah, general question about, about the fun, funding source.
All right, we've, uh, we're in the final stages of the audit. All that's being submitted now are the cover letter, organization chart, administrative items. The available project, the available surplus that will be reported to when the audit is delivered at the end of this month, uh, will be between $330,000 and $350,000.
Just ask, that's the second time I heard the word surplus. I just want to make sure I understand what that means. That's money, money in terms of revenue versus expenditures above what we anticipated?
Yeah, the total revenues minus the total expenditures for the last fiscal year yield a surplus of between $330,000 and $350,000. So, what we're proposing is that we encumber, uh, 200, uh, 3, $203,986, $203,986 of that projected surplus, uh, so that we can finish the police project. Obviously, we're, you see in the list, uh, there's about $96,000 of potential change orders that are still being negotiated. So, that number, uh, we are working assiduously to, to get that number down. Any money that would not be spent would be returned back to the general fund.
I, Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the allocation of $203,986 to the police station project.
Second for discussion?
You also need to say that it's coming out of the surplus from the 2018, 2019.
As presented by the town administrator to, uh, come from the anticipated budget surplus of this year.
Of the previous fiscal year.
Thank you, the previous fiscal year.
2017, 2018.
Right.
2017, 18 fiscal year.
Second.
For discussion?
For discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? For discussion? Mark, yeah?
I like you a lot. And I have no problem paying that $39,720. Well, I have one problem. We shouldn't have to pay it because it's the contractor that went over. It's the contractor should be picking up that fee. For lack of a better term, you should have been standing up there tonight reviewing the project and how everything went smooth and swimmingly and it's done and the police are moving in, not telling us that we owe another $204,000 and we're not gonna be done till March. This is not at you, this is maybe a question and direction to the town administrator to go back to Bentley and say, "You're paying to keep Mark on for another three months, because we shouldn't have to pay for you to continue to be here. We don't, we like you. Think you're doing a good job, but, um, it's not our fault that you have to stay here longer. It's the contractors and therefore the contractor should eat that."
These, these are discussions, obviously, we can have with the contractor, but none of this will get resolved in the course of the, of the contract. These are things that will get resolved at the end of the contract when we discuss errors and omissions and possible claims.
If I could, um, and I, I'm gonna try to, I guess, simplify things a little bit. Um, and I, and I agree that there could be some issues that can be resolved down the road, but I think as, uh, Mark mentioned earlier, right now, we're, we're at the limit of we only have a few dollars left in, in the, in the checkbook. And in order for us to continue doing the business of getting the station done, we need to have this additional, uh, influx of cash to, to cover those costs. We can continue to pursue the cost recovery aspect of it, you know, in the, in the weeks, months to come through the different avenues of the contracts or retainage issues, whatever that might be, errors and omissions. But legally, these guys have a contract that says they get paid once their invoices are approved and we're gonna be up against it if they submit another invoice because we're not gonna have enough to cover it. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes and no.
Yes, yeah.
There are bona fide change orders that legitimately, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract, should be generated, but have not yet been generated because I cannot present them to the administrator, who cannot present them to the finance director, because it would create a condition where there, there is an inability to serve, uh, to provide a certificate of availability of funds, uh, the legal requirement. So, I, I'm standing here as your representative, telling you that I am not going to put either the town administrator, this council, or the finance director in that position. If your vote tonight is to not approve these funds, I have to, you know, in accordance with my legal requirements, under contractual duties, I have to notify the contractor and basically stop the work or, uh, related to these required improvements. So, I agree with you, there are mechanisms for recovery. They are not here and now.
Right.
Those are later, down the road, uh, should the council wish to undertake them under advice of the council. I am here to help you find the way to yes. I am telling you what you need to hear, not necessarily what you want, unfortunately. Uh, this is not me springing anything out of this committee. I've been talking about this kind of, uh, for a year now. We saw this coming when, uh, on midday. Whether we had used up a great deal of our contingency, uh, because the budget, as you know,
They came in high.
The budget, uh, was stale. Uh, and, you know, I, we could revisit this for quite some time. The post-mortem on this would be extensive, but, um, I don't think that's real.
And, and I understand, and, I mean, we are, unfortunately, we're at the end of, we're, we're at the end and there's very little chance for, for certain elements of work for us to get any cost savings. I think you guys have been trying to value engineer since the day one of opening the bids. The potential for the $95,000, that's what you know, um, plus or minus. This is, I, a little higher than we, we, I know last time we were talking in the 150 range. I know some things came up, you know, based on what we're seeing here. So, it, so this is what you think might be worst case?
This is what I'm hoping is my forecast of, of, of the conservative view. Uh, I indicated the last time I appeared before you, I did not want to have to go back to you a second time. Uh, so, uh, this is my conservative view, the realistic view, uh, knowing what we know out there, looking at all the PCO logs, looking at the issues, looking at the challenges to complete. This is my best professional judgment as to what it's going to take in order to reach the threshold.
And, and from the contractor's perspective, I think, you know, he's still pushing for end of December, early January with basically most of it completed?
Right, uh, so what you, you, I believe you also provided the overall project schedule, corrected for a couple of errors from the last time. Uh, it indicates that the vast majority of the work will be complete by end of December, early January, with a period of time for commissioning, startup, validation. That schedule exists and if I can draw your attention, so Brian needs, uh, 80, basically, uh, 84. And 84 through 88. Testing and balancing, end of December through, uh, the first week of January. Commissioning, January 10th through February 6th. Punch list work, uh, February 7th through February 20th. Final inspections, certificate of use and occupancy, transfer moved occupants, Thursday, 2/28 through Monday, 3/4. So, those are the, that's the project schedule, that the latest update that we have from the contractor and, uh, we believe is achievable.
And, and I, and obviously, we're in a situation we, we didn't want to be in, I think. You know, none of us want it to be in, but it's not as simple, easy. It's not, it's also not as simple to say, well, we can't, if we deny this, it opens up a whole nother can of worms with stuff being incomplete, warranties being voided because work won't be completed. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, as, as much as we're, we're looking at 204 in front of us, it, it'll be worse if we, in your opinion, would it be worse if we try to?
It'll be absolutely worse.
Okay.
I, I would not have lost this proposed, uh, motion, uh, to you if I thought that there was an easier, be better, cleaner, uh, more appropriate way to solve this.
Okay. Are there any other questions from councilors?
Yeah, I'm inclined, I mean, I'm inclined to support this because I understand the, the, you know, the need to finish the police station and be, I don't want to be, you know, penny wise and pound foolish in the completion of a $10 million project. But if you, I mean, you look at the numbers, it was an $8.31 million budget. Change orders to date are $415,000 plus 95, which puts us at about 6% over. I mean, I was sitting, not sitting at this council when the contract was awarded to them, but, you know, when I see things like required to meet fire code under a change order, I, I'm not gonna nitpick it, but I'm just saying that I'm not super happy about this, but I am inclined to support it because I understand the, the big picture goals for the better, you know, in the best interest of our town. I think it's important to approve it, but this kind of, um, you know, excess over the, the budget is not, not great and I, unfortunately, this often happens when awards are, when contracts are awarded to the lowest bidder.
Actually, uh, you know, I do believe that we have, and with what the contractor, we have the appropriate quality, and I think that it's been a very high quality. The vast majority of these change orders were site-related. They have, they're having to do with the suitable soil, they have to do with rock and ledge and other things that, uh, aren't below grade and below the earth and that couldn't have been discovered or weren't discovered during the geotechnical and other prior investigations. And, uh, I, I hear you. Change orders under 5%, at around 5% on a project like this are the average. And I agree with you, they're only percentage or two, or, you know, or, or a fraction there, over there up, I, is not ideal. But everything that's happened here has been fully documented and validated in, in a number of parallel ways. So, I can assure you that, uh, it's just the circumstances of building that building on that site, not because of a excessive number of errors, omissions, or improper behavior on any part.
Yeah, I understand that, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I think we're gonna have, I think there's some comments behind you.
And our questions. More questions?
No, and or questions.
Well, there was a motion, uh, do you vote on that motion?
Well, no, we're gonna take some comments, concerns, and we have a motion and a second for discussion.
Tom Reed went in there, uh, Mr. Captain, what, here was the last budget to pass, uh, so I think we can forgive him for the, uh, for the motion. But, uh, I think four of you should remember that in the budget, when we came to the warrants or bonds that had not been paid off for many years, I think there were close to $2 million of them, we put away $50,000 for that and the total surplus for the year.
My suggestion was that we use half of the total surplus. That did not pass, it was just a $50,000 period.
Was that it?
Yeah. I, I tried.
I, I support your try.
I was, I was trying to close the gap faster, but.
Thank you. That would have been a good thing to do, yeah, thank you very much.
But in, in the end, it was just a $50,000 each year and that is still budgeted in.
That's out, that's out.
That, well, that's in this year's budget, it wasn't in last year's budget, correct?
Uh, yeah.
It was in this coming, the budget we're in right now.
Correct.
Not last year's.
Mr. Porch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that the motion is a little bit flawed. First of all, the fiscal year in which this surplus was generated has been completed. And my understanding of the course of events, you know, surplus is you're at the end of fiscal year, the most funds are technically deposited into the fund balance. So, I think what your motion really should say is that you're transferring $203,000 out of the fund balance. You're no longer operating a budget that's expiring at this point. So, that's, that's what you're really doing is you're pouring money out of the fund balance. Also, um, I obviously don't care for the greater spending more than you now appropriated by the town, but I'll, I made that argument in the past, I don't feel. The, uh, one of the problems here is we're trying to manage a project in the closing, theoretically closing weeks of the operation. The time to manage your costs is some months ago, you had an opportunity. And, yes, you know, there were few options. Nobody, I think, would advocate that the building remains unfinished. That's not appropriate use for people. But we had an opportunity some months ago to try and alter the trajectory we were on in terms of costs and should we take them then? I advocated for that then, so it's not that it wasn't an idea that you hadn't heard. But the, my estimate of the costs at this point is somewhat different than yours. I had the $180,000 that's been moved by furniture into the, into the general fund. And I think the $50,000 to delay second coat paving on the parking lot, is that adopted, I'm not quite sure if that company has. So, mine adds up to $433,000 over the $10 million dollars at this point. And I think that, uh, we're probably gonna see a few more changes in all of this. I mean, that's probably realistic, yes, expected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice. Mark rebuttal?
Additional information?
Sure.
First of all, the proposed, the presentation of potential savings to the council and to the staff group, uh, that we had once presented to you to, uh, omit or transfer the second coat or the top coat paving, uh, from this project to DPW, uh, we abandoned that, uh, based on the feedback heard. So, the 203, what, within this presentation this evening, within this request, includes the contractor fulfilling their project requirements for both binder.
And service.
And service, uh, as well as writing in, in a full and complete project. So, that was withdrawn or rejected as a concept. With regard to the trajectory of costs, uh, statement that was made, it many, many, many times, I wrote up big, large sheets of paper and, uh, in.
and inverted curve, the cost certainty curve, where our ability to influence costs at different stages of the project, whether it be a conceptual phase, schematic design phase, design development, construction documentation, bid phase, and then construction phase. At each and every one of those milestone periods that we were involved in the project, we were very laser-focused on cost mitigation. We were always looking at alternative building materials. We were looking at options. We were looking at mechanical systems. We were looking at a variety of different things, all in an effort to reduce the trajectory of costs that have been discussed here. I think the post-mortem on this and feedback for the council is to accept the recommendation or to understand that the recommendation by a prior council, I don't know when, to not include escalation from the time that the architect and engineers presented their initial concept, their initial budgets, to the time that the project bid, had escalation been incorporated in here, we probably wouldn't be having any of these conversations. That is, in essence, the post-mortem that I'm more than happy to talk about tonight, that it would have had the largest impact on the success of the structure. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions, but.
No, I.
Mr. President, we have, again, thank you for your input presentation. It's edifying to hear these explanations. And I was not here on prior councils, but I think there is a reality that we face, and that is, we cannot go back in time. It's simply always true that you can only move forward from where you are, and here we are. We have a choice to commit to these funds, as the town administrator has described where they would come from, to finish the building. Or essentially, not finish the building and end up in a protracted process where eventually the building is done, probably at more extra costs because of the time delay. So it may be regrettable that we find ourselves here, but here we find ourselves, and we're faced with a decision. We need to get the building done.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Katsman. I think we have another set of comments or questions. Mr. Fitz?
Jonathan Kepich, 119 Combe Avenue, reports from Rhode Island. The old station is inadequate, we know this. We voted to approve $9.9 million for the new station. Change orders suck. I got to say it the way it is. I have three contracts right now with change orders not approved. For the men and the women of the Porson Police Department and for the citizens, let's just get it done and then chase it afterwards. That's all we can do. They need a new house, okay? Because if you've been in the new, the old, you know what I'm talking about. So there should be no more discussion. Just let's prove it. If money is in this room, as it is, let's get it done and then march after it. We'll get, we can find it. Mr. Gavin, you can go look for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rayner, do we need a clarification? Is it a transfer from?
Let the finance director explain it. Basically, this money becomes assigned from that surplus. She'll explain.
I think you just said it all. So basically, whatever is left in that surplus, and currently, we have a surplus plus we have amounts that are assigned that are coming out of the surplus for amounts that were previously budgeted for a four-year period. And that includes some canvassing expenses, some revell. So it's no different than that. So what the town council would do if, you know, if the motion's approved, that that would be assigned, so it would be for that use, and it would be restricted.
So we're okay with the motion to, to serve this? We're okay with the motion at this stage? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I just got one more quick question. There's still the roughly $8,000 of contingency.
That's correct.
Would that come off the top of this if we can utilize it for that? And then, like you said, there's $204,000 left over. I mean, we're asking to use.
The eight contingency is all part of this figure.
Not by my math.
No, no, we're asking for the 200, we're running off, we're asking for the 204,000.
Yep.
All right. But we still are counting on that $7,000 contingency that we have left over. And any money that doesn't get spent, it will be turned back over to the general fund. That's as simple as I can make it.
Understood. I just, when I added up the numbers, the 203, 956, 82 is, whatever it is, is even. It doesn't subtract out the 7996. So the 7996 would get us to around 195.
Your math is correct.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I was hoping that a 7996.
It's apples and oranges. It doesn't matter. It's just going to sit there. Whatever's left over goes back.
Mr. President, I would move the previous question at this point.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Please get her done.
As always, you have your marching orders. Thank you, Mark. March the 3rd.
March the, Mark, no, we're going to cut the ribbon so they can open the door to get them in. We're going to cut it on the 2nd? Okay.
Hold on, I lost my time. New Business One.
Wow, it's all old business.
That was. New Business One is a request approval of Glenn Farms special event field application.
Mr. President, I move that we approve as requested by the recreation director for July 6th and 7th, 2019, for the special event fields for Rhode Island McCross.
Second.
Should we make a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And then we have, next, it's to review the milestone dates of our 2019 budget calendar.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This looks very comprehensive and certainly makes sense. Looks like it comports with all the charter requirements and the other statutory requirements in terms of timing. So I would move that we thank Mr. Rayner for his work and approve the proposed budget dates.
Seven, for discussion?
Every motion is for discussion.
Mr. President, I've been working, obviously, with the school superintendent in developing this. The one question that remains outstanding, you'll see there's January XX as a date for the joint town-school legislative meeting, which is usually followed by a joint budget priorities presentation. We're proposing either the 2nd or the 12th of January.
7th.
What did I say?
7th.
Oh, I meant the 7th. Although, we are going back to work on the 2nd, the day after New Year's. I'm not sure why the school superintendent approved that, though.
So the 7th is a Monday and the 12th is a Saturday?
Yeah, so we give you the option. I mean, we can do it on a Monday night. Obviously, that would be a special meeting. Or we do it the Saturday of the 12th, like we've done it in years previous.
Well, the school committee's first meeting is the 8th. So should we do it before they have their first meeting in January?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be. The 7th? Is that up to you?
That's my preference. And the school committee's outnumbered six to one tonight.
Oh, we should ask it.
So we'll send a meeting for January 7th?
Thank you.
Will that be a 7 o'clock meeting?
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Some people need to feed their families. Some need to get home from Lincoln in Providence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Some need to get home from New York some days, like tonight.
All right.
All right.
Was that it, Mr. Rayner?
That was it.
Take a bow.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And then we have correspondence.
Motion to receive and place on file.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And then we have future meetings. We have our special meeting on Wednesday, December 19th, followed by our first meetings in 2019 on the, well, now.
Special meeting on the 7th.
And then our regularly scheduled meeting is January 14th and January 28th.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On Saturday, you talked about moving 19th to the 20th.
Yeah, it can't happen.
Can't happen?
Yeah. Sorry.
That's all right.
I got shut down. Hard.
Just a couple of checks.
President, I made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion may stay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, everyone.